Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this meeting to order today for our April the 19th, 2023 joint meeting with the school board. I'd like to welcome the school board here today, all the members here. I also like to welcome Dr. Walgo and Tara Booth here also. So glad to see y'all. All right, Ms. Christopher.
All right. The meeting will now come to order. We have established a forum. If you would like to connect to the, this meeting, you may. Use Zoom meeting online or meeting ID is 814-2791-3553. Passcode is 312074. You can dial by your location toll-free either 888-475-4499, Okay.
All right. Thank you. All right, well, our first item on our agenda today is a discussion with the school board. And Ms. Christopher, do you have anything?
All right, I'm gonna turn it over to our superintendent to present on our behalf.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Haney and Mrs. Christopher. We were gonna go through some documents with you, and the first is a packet that I just gave to you. It's entitled, the first page says, "Assessment Pass Rate Comparison." And if you were at the Board of Supervisors meeting last Thursday, I believe Mr. Brand had asked for some information that I wanted to go over with you. So on page one, you'll see Assessment Pass Rate Comparison, and this shows, showcases grades three through high school comparing 2020, 2021 to 2021, 2022 SOL scores. And for the most part, as I looked through this, you can see that we definitely had growth and gains in most areas. And you can see this is broken down in the areas of reading, writing, mathematics, science, as well as history. If you go to the second page, I believe Mr. Brand also requested a 2020, 2021 pass rate comparison with local counties. That's what you see on the second page. And then the next page has 2021, 2022 SOL pass rate comparisons with local counties. Across the top, you can see we compared against the statewide average. Northumberland is in that second column. Lancaster, Richmond County, Essex, Westmoreland, and Colonial Beach. And again, you'll see this is broken down by reading, writing, mathematics, science, and history. And I asked Ms. Booth if she would speak to the other question that came up, which was cost per pupil.
Yes. So our projected cost per pupil for 2022 was $16,279. In actuality, it was $16,558. I did go online to try and see what the comparison would be with other local counties, but the most updated information that the VDOE has for other localities is 2020, 2021 school year. So I went on some individual school websites locally to see if they had anything. And the only county I found that had a 2022 number on their website was Richmond County, and they still have their estimate for 2022 at $13,541.
Thank you. So we're gonna move on to the approved budget. And I believe you have that electronically. The school board approved the proposed budget on April 13th, 2023. And I'm gonna review some of the changes in this budget. You'll see that the overall budget is $23,331,811. This represents a salary increase for all current personnel, which is a 5% increase plus a 1.25% step, which comes to $1,033,729. It features an adjustment to the paraprofessional salary scale for minimum wage at a cost of $63,930. An increase in technology admin software, that's an increase of $42,000. As discussed, the proposal includes three security officers with benefits. These security officers would be located in each of our lobby areas, and they would be able to monitor metal detecting and visitors coming to the building. That's at a cost of $134,844. One speech pathologist with benefits at a cost of $116,130. One occupational therapist at $110,880. A regional program increase for governor's school at $10,125. Health insurance for drivers and benefits for drivers, that's $300,222 for the health insurance for drivers, as well as benefits coming in at $68,254. A 9.9% increase to the local choice, which is an increase of $219,696. And the service master contract at an increase of $24,000. And a fuel increase at $120,000. So these are changes in the approved budget from the school board. And I believe recently, we requested a categorical change for fuel, and I believe Stacy Brannum is here to speak on that. Stacy here.
Hello.
Hello.
So I did a fuel usage explanation earlier today. So for the 2022, 23 budget for the fuel line, it was $130,000. As of January 25th, our total spend was $131,057,47, which makes the fuel line negative in the amount of $1,057.47. From January 31st through March 29th, NWP had brought an additional $47,669.38 in total fuels. So now that makes us over our count budget, which made us go into the negative, $48,726.85. So then I added the credit, which was NWP's miscalculation, of $19,856.27. So now we're currently over budget by $28,870.58. So then I went into the, from April until June, to get us through the end of the fiscal school year. So I estimated fuel usages, fuel usage for the months of April, May, and June by comparing previous months. So April, we're doing an estimate of 4,000, 4,215 gallons of diesel fuel at $3.83, which is the current price we're paying right now per gallon, to total 16,143.45. 800 gallons of unleaded gasoline at $275, which is current price, for a total of $2,200. So then May, I estimated about 1,000 gallons of diesel fuel. June, about 1,000, and then 800 gasoline for each month. So when you total those three months together, you're at $30,403.45. So if you take that, estimating fuel needed April through June, plus the over budget amount of the negative $28,870.58, so that brings our total amount to $59,274.03, which is what we were over budget. Then what I had previously asked for was the $63,988.12. So that is the $59,274.03, which is total over budget. And then NWP charges us fees. They charge us a federal oil spill tax, a Virginia UG storage fee, federal UG storage fee, and wholesale tax. So the rest of that amount, that's where that's paid up. It's made up in all those additional charges that they charge us each time they call. Anybody have any questions?
This is just the diesel fuel for the buses.
This is diesel and gas.
Diesel and gas, but no heating or?
No. No heating or isn't this? That all goes to jet.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Not at this time, I don't think.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know there was a question, Mr. Haney. There was a question previously about the fuel budget and the category total, whether the overage was just on the fuel line. But Ms. Brannum did have three engines that were rebuilt this year, each at a cost of about $40,000. So her other line items are either at budget, right over budget, or I believe there's one that has about $4,000 left. So I do foresee the category being over what was appropriated based on the increased fuel price and the needing of the engines for the buses.
Were those overhauls planned or unplanned?
They were unplanned.
And how far were they into their useful life?
So Bus Six, we were at about 150,000 miles when the engine went on that. Bus Seven, I think Bus Seven was about 170,000, and then the third bus was around about 200,000.
Will you normally run buses in terms of when do you decide to keep them or do away with them?
We haven't decided to do away with any unless they're just under repairable. Since I've been here, we've had, I think, three buses that we have surplus, and we have two more on the list to surplus.
How often do you have to replace the engines and everything? Is that, is that an annual thing that you replace X number?
No, it's not. It seems like the last couple of years, the engines have really been as hard. But before that, it was quite a few years before we had to replace them. And when we do replace them, it's being replaced with a Cummins. It seems like the Max Fours are at 150,000 miles. They're just kind of breaking down.
I think you explained to us one time before that they were the international engines that were going at 150, 170,000 miles, and they were upgrading them to the Cummins, which is a better haul, I bet, I mean.
How many of the other engines do you have versus the Cummins?
So out of our fleet, we've got, we've got about seven with a Cummins or a Mercedes engine. And then the rest are international.
And how many is that approximately?
I'd say probably about at least 20.
So if you're hitting about that, that's almost something that should've been a capital improvement budget to replace X number of year. How many are approaching the 150, 175 mile, thousand mile? What?
All of them. All, okay, all of them mixed up over one, two, all of them mixed up for two buses. Three if you include the special needs.
So theoretically, that large number could all go at one time.
Yes. We could be in a lot of trouble all at once.
You're gonna have to be sheltering around.
May you help me.
We've only been getting like one bus a year, so you're looking at the majority of the fleet with older engines.
I don't think the engine's got so much age to it, it's just that it's, it's not a dependable engine, and they've had so much trouble with it. It's not like the Cummins. The Cummins has been there for years, it's a good and good engine, it'll stay there for years.
I know all about Cummins and diesels and trucks.
And now when you buy new buses, they don't even have the international engine, it's a Cummins.
It's good. Better choice.
Yeah.
Much better choice.
More expensive, but much better.
You either got that or you got a Mercedes.
Yeah.
And you're gonna pay more for the Mercedes.
Yes. The Thomas buses, which is the more square type buses, that has the Mercedes engine. And I mean, honestly, we haven't had that much trouble with our Thomas buses, but they are a lot more expensive. I think the last time we checked, it was like $135,000, and I'm sure it's more than that now.
How much more difference for a Cummins versus the old International?
The Internationals, if you were to replace one, the last time we had one replaced, it was about 20, I want to say about 23,000 versus a Cummins is anywhere from 36, 38.
Still cheaper than replacing an engine?
Still, yeah.
There are three buses on the capital improvement request plan too. Actually, there might be six, but three are urgent.
Anything else, Tom?
No.
All right. Okay. Now you have $63,000 minus $64,000 additional money in fuel, and you're asking for $120,000 additional funds. So I guess you're figuring to go back for these extra months in next year's budget too, is what you're doing?
That's correct.
Okay.
And 20,000 of that is for Mr. Brand, because he does see his going over. He doesn't think categorically in his whole section he will go over, but he has also seen the increase in the fuel, and he requested an additional $20,000 for the coming fiscal year.
Is he over fuel in terms of usage or price, or both?
I can't answer that, but I can get that information for you.
Well, I don't imagine your overall usage as far as per gallon, how many gallons you're using, has changed that much. That may change a few gallons along, but it's probably the price is what's doing it.
I agree, Mr. Haney. I said I agree with you.
Yeah.
It's the cost.
Yeah, I just don't see where you're adding that many gallons to it.
Didn't the fees also make it go up, the fees that she was talking about at the end?
Yeah.
She's got that here.
Yeah.
That's on there.
They charge us every time to come in. All right. Do any board members have any questions at this time?
We get it too. We get it for our fuel here too.
Yeah.
It's standard, it's standard.
It's all standard.
Yeah. You look at the price of fuel, whichever it is, this is the product, but then you look at all the taxes built into it. That could be 50 cents in taxes of the various kinds.
All right, any board members have any other questions?
Yeah, and it's nothing to do with the budget part. But with the information that you done with our several testing, can you put that on yours website for people to review and see that?
Sure.
It has been some improvement.
Absolutely.
That's all I got?
I'll take note of that. Thank you, Mr. Brand.
Wouldn't this be buried somewhere in the school report card?
Yes, sir. It's public.
That's what I thought.
But if he wants it easier access, that's fine.
I'm not saying that. I mean, that's, school report cards are big bear to go through.
Yeah, that's all public.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Is the fuel something y'all need voted on tonight?
We're hoping for that.
Is that something y'all would entertain?
What's that?
Vote on the fuel.
Moving categories.
Moving the categories for the fuel, you know, where we're categorized.
I don't know what the board wants to do yet. I guess we may have to discuss it a little bit yet. I don't know. I can't speak for the board.
Would y'all need time to discuss it or tonight?
Is this something needed soon or what?
So through my conversations with Mr. Tadlock, it does not have to be done this month if you need time to look at it.
Okay.
But by the end of the fiscal year, we need to make sure that our category has not gone over, so we would need to make an adjustment, you know, before the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
All right, that's fine.
That's different.
That's fine. Would you say your increase in funding this year would be?
By dollar amount or percent?
Dollar amount.
By dollar amount for the operational budget would be an increase of 2.419921.
All right. Is that your operational budget?
Yes, when we include the school nutrition, there was an addition of $519 to that.
Yeah, that's, that's nothing really. So it's 2442119?
2419.
2419?
921.
921.
It's just operational, and it's.
It's just operational, but is that your total increase that you need?
Our total increase is 2420440.
242040.
2420440.
44.
24, 24.
440.
44.
It's up page eight.
That number's in the, in the letter.
Yep, it's in the letter.
Yeah, it's in the letter.
It's at the beginning.
At the top of the page.
While he's calculating, the request to do for the fuel transfer, that full amount would be coming from the instructional?
Yes, sir.
Category, okay. Because I saw the 63, the letter that we had last time, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, sir.
What is the difference between when we met last time, you gave it the budget that had not been approved? What was the increase from that to what was actually approved?
In the, I believe it's the fourth page, it doesn't have a page number, it's the page right after the letter. The only things that, that changed since the last time were the fuel, and I believe everything else was on there previously, except for perhaps, I'm not sure if we had met with you when we'd included the health insurance and the benefits for the bus drivers. And we may have found out about the service master contract after the first time we met with you as well. Everything else was the same.
Would it be beneficial to you if you hired another employee instead of having service master?
We're looking into that.
Well, how did it fall? You think they had done a pretty good job?
No.
This past year?
They started out a couple of years ago doing a significantly improved job, and we have seen some dropping off of that service, and so we are exploring other possibilities.
If you hire your own staff, does the school own the machines to clean the floors?
Yes, sir. We still have all of our own machinery for the most part, which is a good thing.
Yeah.
That enables that pivot.
That would be a huge cost to start up.
Yes, sir.
Good deal.
And we'll keep you posted as we work through that process.
All right, any board members have any other questions? All right, ladies, y'all have anything else to tell us? All right, well, I'd like to thank you. Thank you very much for presenting your budget here. Let's see. We don't have anything else.
I got one thing. Your capital improvement request, where is that in all this? Was I having to go look at what the planning commissioner?
It's page 46.
In the approved budget?
Yes, sir.
All right, I can find that eventually.
All right, well, let us look at that a little bit.
Speaking of the capital improvement budget, you may recall that when Mr. Brand was here, in order to put the LVT replacement flooring at the elementary school over the summer months, that has to be ordered pretty much now in order to make that project happen. I don't believe we've received any direction on that project.
So what do you need?
What I mean is the carpet is 26 years old at the elementary school in most of the pods, and we have a budget request to put the luxury vinyl tile down and to replace that old war carpet that is not, it's a cleanliness health issue at this point.
It's to the point, there's no shampoo in it or anything, it disintegrates because it's so old. And it's just like indoor, outdoor, office-type carpet. It's not even like a plush carpet.
It's 26 years old.
Yeah.
And some of it's already been done.
Yeah.
And it really looks, it's real durable. You get a chance to go down and look at it.
Two pods are finished, it's kindergarten and first grade. We did that last summer.
Is it correct that the new flooring, you don't have to wax or anything that, right? That's just, you would save that much money as well?
Yes. So those summer projects, and I think Mr. Haney knows about that, all of the money that goes into the waxing, we would be doing a cost savings moving forward of significant value, once, if we do transition to the LVT.
I understand that's $65,000 for either a wax or disposal or something in there.
Yeah.
It's a lot. It's a whole lot of money.
How soon do you need okay on that?
We need it now because what happens is you have to order, and the installation would need to happen over the summer months when we don't have all of the children and the staff in place. And I, I believe Mr. Brand mentioned that at our last meeting together.
He did.
He did.
And the cost is $379,380.
Yes.
The other capital improvement project that's a safety issue? The other capital improvement project that's a safety issue is the rooftop stairway installation that we touched on at our last meeting. That's at the bottom of page.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven.
Yeah.
Mr. Tadlock, if the board wanted to, even the board wanted to do the money for the flooring, that would require a budget amendment to the school board, would it? Because right now, that would come out of county funds and that amount probably is exceeding the limits.
Yeah, we would probably need to do a budget amendment. You could do it one of two different ways. One way we've been handling the capital improvement projects has been the school division carrying out the procurement process. And they take care of the project and the invoice comes to the county. In that way, we're not having to transfer monies back and forth. So we put those monies under the capital improvement project line item in the county budget. Would be one way. Or the board could transfer those funds to the school division.
Have you all put in for procurement for the flooring?
Not yet.
I got a question before we get too far. We got a school budget public hearing, is that the county's going to, that's the county's public hearing on the school budget, May 4?
That, that's just a draft calendar. And that's just specifically for the, the approved fiscal year '24 budget that the school division...
I didn't know if CIP projects needed or would be discussed or be a part of that public hearing or not. Well, the planning commission haven't acted on that yet.
Yeah, the planning commission has their public hearing tomorrow night.
And then we as a board have to approve that. Well, I guess we got to wait. I mean, it's for every cart before the horse right now.
Yeah, the, the planning commission is having a public hearing tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night.
Okay.
I have a question. Is there a new update on the roof for the building that our school board office is housed in? Is it still leaking?
We have the documents and everything ready to go for the drawings to be bid out.
I think last time you said you were sending out bids.
Well, we're still at the same spot. I think the question is at what process or point is the school division for the, because we know you have the information out for bids regarding the new school board building. So I think, I think the board was waiting on some of that information prior to making a decision on the roof.
Nobody would go in that building after we left?
I, I don't know. That's still up for a decision as far as what direction the board wants to do.
I just would hate for the county to let that building go because as it is with the building, the roof leaking, it's not going to be in the account to house anybody else, just like our old school board office. So, I mean, we've been talking about it probably three years. I just thought y'all would be further along.
No, it's ready to be bid.
Okay.
We've still got leaks.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Haney?
Yes, ma'am.
Sure.
How long will be too late to order that flooring?
According to Jeff, you know, I spoke with him this week and he, he was asking, he said, I think when he saw that the school board approved the budget, he thought that meant the capital improvements were approved. And he was excited, he said, because he needs to order, you know, he's, needs to be poised to make that order.
And it's April.
And it's April.
Yeah.
Exactly.
It's actually into April.
So you'd have to relocate kids if it was not done in the summer?
We have a plan that we've discussed, you know, we, both principals are willing to be housed together. Or we could do, we could do a front hall, back hall scenario where we do the project while we also have our summer learning in the different hallways.
That's in the summer, during the school year?
During the school year, I really, that would be very disruptive to student learning. It's not the best option. However, I mean, the carpet is not in a good state and it's a health issue. So it needs to be addressed.
All right, in your, I guess, what is it, the SRO 123 funds or any other federal funding that you're, that you have or you're getting, can any of this be used in your CIP program?
Sure. That's what their plan for the school board office is. If you build an office, you can definitely put the carpet in. There's less restrictions on this set of funds. This is the American Rescue Funds as opposed to the other group, which was very limited.
But that's money that you could use for that and buy buses too? And did you get, did you ask for funding on the, did you ask for funding for school buses?
We have that in the capital improvement plan.
Okay. I mean, but did you ask the feds for funding?
Not at this, we, we do have one reimbursement.
Correct. We did have, there was one bus in the request and it was purchased, I believe, in February.
Okay.
There's no specific fund with school bus requests.
Yeah, I didn't know whether it was, was or it wasn't.
But to your question, Mr. Haney, the school board has given me direction to build, do a new construction of a school board office. So the funds are, that, that project is expensive.
Well, I'd also add that's years away. I mean, even if we do build a new building, we're still housed over here. So we're looking at probably one or two more years of a leaking roof. And, I mean, my opinion, the SRO funds are the only way we're going to get a, a house to live in. Right now, we're homeless.
It's possible the construction might be metal, so that goes up a little faster too.
Yeah. We have employees with health issues at this point, so I don't think y'all want that on your plate either.
All right, and board members, any more questions?
If that building that you're in now, the roof was fixed and not leaking, would you, would the school board consider staying there and using those funds to?
We'd have to discuss it as a board, I'm only one person.
Well, I understand.
Yeah.
But is that something that you all would be willing to have a discussion on?
We can discuss it, but...
Right. I mean, whatever you decide, you decide, and that's fine. At least a question was asked and it was considered and...
We can always discuss anything y'all suggest.
All right. Where are we now? Any more questions or the school board staff have any questions?
Is this a public hearing?
So we need to jump on that, that 379,380 as soon as possible, right?
Correct.
All right.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Well, I think the school board needs to consider which is more important. A school board office or some of these critical areas that you have listed? You've listed the health concerns for the carpeting and all these other things. Obviously, the roof has to get fixed. I'm not going to argue with you there, you're right exactly, Dana.
Right.
And I frankly, my plans is to be using it for something. It was a plan for the treasurer's commission of revenue, but it needs to be fixed.
I mean, for years, it had plans, but nothing went through.
Well, we've been pushing, I've been pushing.
Exactly.
Yeah, I remember him enjoying it sometimes.
Trust me, I've got, I've got all the minutes printed out.
I've been pushing it every month, you know?
You know what a plan in the home of county is? A four out of word, nobody wants to use it. Not the first time I've said it either.
Well, you know, that's embarrassing.
Well, I'm not arguing with you.
Yeah, as a taxpayer, it's embarrassing.
But I think it's embarrassing to take a school...
You've got to, you've got to remember, you lease the building that the elector office is in. You lease the social services building. They've been leased probably more than I've been born. And all that money is going down the drain for leasing a building you don't own. This is actually a building you own at this point. And we can't even get y'all to put a roof on it. And to me, that's embarrassing. So you getting aggressive, talking about us building a school board office? We have no other choice.
We'll never get a school board office.
This is our only choice.
We will never.
Well, if questioning which is more of a priority is aggressive, I will be aggressive. Because I think that is what the public needs to be concerned about. You have shown us pictures last time, one time when you did the last one, but you showed there was big concern about the playground and stuff like that. In 26 years, I've been here 24, that whole issue has never been discussed. And all of a sudden, now it's a major bona fide emergency.
Oh, it's been discussed. It might not have fell on your ears, but it's been discussed.
Yeah, man, you can just say it.
It has been discussed ever since there was no fence on that playground. And my child went there, there was cornfields, no fences.
My child went there along with your daughter at the same time.
Yeah, at the same age.
Yep.
There's had, that issue has been there ever since they built it and formed it. And then when they put out the Little League fields, it made it worse. And now it's just past the point of no return.
Mr. Haney, may I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am, you certainly can.
It dovetails into the discussion being held right now. Mr. Brand had mentioned earlier whether the school board would consider, what did you say about the big building?
Staying where you're at.
Staying where we're at.
If the roof is repaired like it should be.
And I'm not looking for an answer today because I know boards need to discuss on both sides. But is, I put out there, is it a possibility that we stay in the EVB bank, be permitted to do some upgrades there because it needs some, a couple, small internal upgrades? But also, in doing that, there would be money for other projects. I just throw that out there. And I'm not sure that I should have, but it's, it's another discussion point for both boards.
Well, I understand that. They're pointing out that we're spending money on a school board office, that we could be spending money on improvements in the building, I understand that. But we didn't have any other option.
We have the opportunity.
Yeah, this is an opportunity to have that building paid for.
Won't come back again.
Yeah.
These specific funds are specific to a new construction grant.
Right.
So that particular pot of money would not be able to use, be able to use for the carpet. Not that we may not be able to find it in some other federal grant, but in that particular grant that is specific to new construction.
It can't be used for the floor.
It cannot be used.
Is that what you're saying? Let's be clear.
Who designated for new construction?
Your fed, no, for new, the federal government designated those funds.
They said, well, I remember when they were talking about some things you couldn't do on, you could build something, but you couldn't do the track or something like that.
The student building, we could not house our offices along with the new student building. It had to be solely for students.
Originally, we were trying to do both.
We were trying, yeah. Have a combination building.
We were not allowed to do that.
And they came back and said, no.
That screwy definition, you couldn't do something which made more sense.
Correct.
And if, and if this goes away, I mean, it will go away.
As a comment, everything that we put forth at this point has a big concern for health. Health for students, health for employees. We put nothing out there that does not include a health concern for those that we work with and are responsible for.
If the school board office is built, where are you thinking about putting it?
The site that was identified is next to the elementary school in the auxiliary parking lot toward the wellhouse.
Right-hand side?
Yes, sir.
You're going to have to be very careful there because that's going to increase impervious surface. And the county had to spend $130,000 to take for water coming out from the parking lot and other things when it ran across the road by Steve Sisson. Anything that you do impervious surface can put more pressure on that over there. And I don't want to see more county funds have to pay for what ENS didn't take care of before.
We absolutely would try to address that.
Any water to flow back into the ravine behind the school on the right-hand side as opposed towards Steve's side, it would help.
And your project looks fantastic. You did, whatever company did that, they did great.
But that's what, that was the suggestion because it was the cheapest for the county. It's already graded, it's already got that flow.
How much did the JROC, JROC's building cost?
It, it's about 1.6.
How is a school board office going to be cheaper than that since that's going to have to be higher graded construction?
Right. So we are working on that design build. And it is possible that we do something that is able to be added on to in the future. So there would be a structure, we would make it work for the, for now. We would, but at the same time, it would have the opportunity for growth in the future if funding ever became available.
Okay.
Let's go over the things that we need now. What, what, let's list, let's list those things right off that we need now.
We need a school board office that we've been discussing with the new construction money. I don't know what the board like to, to weigh in as well. We prioritized in our CIP meeting the flooring upgrades that we've already discussed.
Are we talking capital improvement, Jim, or what are we talking about?
Yes.
Budget.
Budget.
We need to take care of the bus drivers.
Their health.
Pair professional salary upgrade. The 5% bus step for the staff. Those are our top priorities, I believe.
And the safety upgrades.
And the safety upgrades.
Safety, security officers. Which are the school security officers in each of the lobbies as well as the sentijix panic button system that all staff could wear on their identification badges to do an immediate lockdown and to call for additional assistance from school administration and the sheriff's office.
Most recent school shooting, parents are super concerned and have every right to be.
I agree.
Well, not every school system in the other neck has an SRO, much less school security officers in them.
We're very proud to prioritize student and staff safety.
Well, you like to compare yourself to Lancaster. Lancaster primary does not have a school resource office, does not have school security. They may have just gotten metal detectors.
They just got metal detectors.
And we want to thank you publicly for always supporting that initiative of student and staff safety. Because you're right, Mr. Thomas. A lot of schools are trying to play catch up right now. And it's an unfortunate state in our world. It's very scary.
If all these security upgrades that you're talking about approve, is there going to be a guarantee that students and staff are not going to open that door on the right-hand side?
You can never guarantee anything.
That defeats all your security. That door has been opened so many times for staff, it's ridiculous.
We always want to be proactive. And, you know, I believe in layers of, you know, each layer creates more security. Can I say 100% that everything's always going to be safe? No. But as a superintendent, I try to put every piece in place, whether it's an SRO in each building, plus the school security officers in each lobby, plus the metal detection that we've introduced, plus the panic button that we can have, et cetera, so. But no, no one can guarantee 100% safety, but we will always strive for that. So, but no, no one can guarantee one hundred percent safety, but we will always strive for that.
Would be nice if you could guarantee it.
I wish I could.
Oh, yeah, wouldn't it?
It's impossible.
I could've guaranteed a six-year-old wouldn't shoot a teacher, but it happened, so.
You're right.
And then in the private school in Louisville, you have assault rifle and shoot through the doors to get in. Your, your school security officers are not armed.
No, they're gonna handle it.
They're gonna be dead as a doornail. And if your SRO is out somewhere else, it's the same thing. I mean, it's how much security, how much loss of privacy, et cetera. I mean, we've gone through all this process since nine eleven. I mean, how much do we want to give up security? How much do we want to give up privacy?
Well, those kids are awful important to me, so I would just keep on adding layers of security. It wouldn't even be a discussion.
Well, I just, again, want to publicly thank the supervisors, as well as our school board, for always putting that as a priority. Again, I don't think we can ever do enough.
Well, without asking you to do in specific cases, but if you have a student who threatens teachers, might they be considered for expulsion?
Usually, yes, we, we can consider them for expulsion.
I'm comparing to the city of Richmond, they don't expel anybody.
We would typically do it, you know, depending on the situation, everything, you have to do a full investigation. But, you know, it involves a ten-day out-of-school suspension from the school building. It involves a threat assessment.
You have to need the threat assessment.
It involves, you know, notifying the sheriff's office.
An alternative plan usually.
It goes to the school board.
Don't have alternative for six-year-old kids, though.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, they do.
Well, not around here.
Yeah.
Technical center doesn't do six.
The Rivermont.
With the ten day-
That's if they're special with, though.
Oh, sorry, I'm, I'm just trying to, so after the ten-day suspension, there's a recommendation to the school board. The school board has a closed session public hearing, at which point they listen to both, you know, all of the facts presented from the student, the family, the administration. And they have the difficult decision, and sometimes an easy decision, to decide if an alternative placement is appropriate. That might include the Northern Neck Alternative Education Program, which we participate in, it's a regional program. Or it can include other alternate settings, as you're aware of, being on CPMT. So, as much as possible, we, we want our children to be in our schools. But when we have something that creates a danger to others, whether it's other students or staff, we take it very seriously. And those issues, our board is constantly meeting on issues such as that. So, we appreciate your service as well.
All right. I don't want you to feel that we're always picking at you, but we have a lot of other things to consider besides just your budget.
Yes, sir.
We have all the other agencies of the county to consider. And when you look at yours and your increase in spending this year, that's nine to ten cent tax increase. You're also looking at probably another ten cent tax increase on the county's side. So, that's a twenty cent increase to the taxpayer. I don't know if tax, a lot of taxpayers can afford that or not. That's what we are, that's what we're faced with. You know, that's, it's not that with Trump.
How much is a penny increase?
Penny increase is two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars.
Two hundred and eighty-one thousand.
Uh huh. Might be a little change onto it too, but it's close enough. So, when you start figuring this twenty cent increase, that's gonna hurt a lot of people.
We're taxpayers too. We're taxpayers too.
I know, we're all taxpayers, we can, we can only afford so much.
But I believe the majority of the citizens in Northam and County, average county, like to see kids get the best education they can. And you gotta have the best teachers and surround, they gotta have support from the county. And the boards too. Board of Supervisors. We on the board, well, I'm on the board, to help the citizens, to help the kids. That's the reason I'm on the board. Not for something that, you know, because I have something deeply in myself that I don't like this, or I don't like that, so I'm not gonna vote against. The most important thing for the schools is educate our kids, keep the best teachers that we can. And the way to keep the best teachers is to give them a fast salary. I mean, most of them, we might have one of the highest-paid counties around for us teachers. That's what we need to get anyway, you know, to keep, keep good teachers. I know every year we lose good teachers because we're not paying like surrounding counties. So, you know, we need to do all we can to make sure that we educate our kids. We have kids that go to every college in Virginia and do well. We have had lawyers to finish Northam High School, judges, you name it. So, that means we've done a good job in the past, and we need to continue to do it.
And you want to attract them to come back and raise their family here as well.
We have two judges that finished Northam High School.
Correct.
Two judges.
Yep.
And I'm proud to say I had the opportunity to teach both of them. And hey, so that's, that's a mark, that's remarkable. I mean, I don't think you can find a county our size that have two judges.
Right.
To finish a, a small high school like we have.
That's all I have.
All right, any other comments?
Well, this has got nothing to do with the budget or any other thing, but the DA program was very nice.
Aw, thank you for being there.
Very nice.
It was a really fun day. Last Friday, we had a picnic with our fifth graders, and we had emergency services there from, from Northumberland, Westmoreland. We had the, the state police.
Game wardens.
Game wardens.
Helicopters.
With K-9 Gracie, who was so cute. Yes, it was really nice.
Thank you for helping us with it. We appreciate it.
And you'll see pictures of that in Friday's highlights. We'll have a nice tribute to it.
I guess everybody's getting ready for prom and graduation.
Yes, definitely.
And that's, what date is that?
Prom is May sixth.
Yes.
And graduation is June third.
June third.
Gail Sarat's birthday.
And yours.
And Holly's birthday.
And Holly's birthday too.
They have the same birthday, June third, and that's graduation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Get everybody else saying happy birthday.
Yeah, that's right.
One of the deputies and I have the same birthday.
Is that right?
Yeah, so he protects me all the time.
There you go.
That's very good. November tenth. May the third.
May sixth.
May sixth.
And June third.
June the third is birthday, right?
All right. Well.
Shall I adjourn?
Yes, ma'am, if you don't have, if nobody has anything else, you may adjourn.
All right, at six thirty-two, I make a motion that we adjourn. Do I hear second?
Second.
Vote?
Aye. Thank y'all so much.
All right, thank y'all for coming. All right, can we carry on to meeting now?
Yep.
All right, next item on the agenda is a carryover from our April thirteenth meeting. Mr. McKenzie, you here tonight?
Yes, sir.
Would you take over, please, sir?
Yes, sir. At, at the public hearing on April thirteenth, we, we had two actions. The first action I will read was the travel trailers and recreational vehicle. But let me read it in full. A revision to the Northam County zoning ordinance, section one forty-eight dash one five-three, travel trailer, to delete the definition of travel trailers, define recreational vehicles, and rename the travel trailer ordinance to the recreational vehicles ordinance. This modification also includes separating tent camping into a new zoning ordinance section. So, the first action, which you all took, deleted the section in the travel trailer ordinance regarding tent camping. Because the tent camping is moved to a create, to a new ordinance that you all requested through your memo to the planning commission. And so, the second item was create a tent camping ordinance section, make commercial camping with compensation a condition use of A-one agriculture on R-two residential waterfront and C-one conservation zoning districts. Commercial camping with compensation will be prohibited in all other zoning districts. Camping without compensation on undeveloped properties less than one acre would require the use of a health department-approved sanitation facility. Further discussion led the planning commission to recommend the board of supervisors to replace the term undeveloped land with property without a dwelling unit or recreational vehicle connected to a permitted septic system. So, I understand that you all tabled it because you were interested in what the health department had to say about the, the health department-approved sanitation facility. But by not acting on this, this means we do not have a tent camping ordinance in the county. Because it was deleted out, by your first action, deleted out the tent camping section from the travel trailer and tent camping ordinance. And therefore, tent camping is in limbo, and there is no ordinance on tent camping. With regards to the health department-approved sanitation facility, the county defers to the health department for all waste systems. We don't issue a building permit without a septic system permit from the health department, and we do not issue help, septic permits. And when somebody adds a bedroom on their house, we require a safe and adequate permit from the health department, which says that the septic system can handle the additional load from another bedroom. And so, we defer all waste, human waste issues to the health department. And that's not our business. Our business is health, I mean, we have public health and welfare, but we defer to that health department because that is their job, and they're the most appropriate agency to do that. So, I understand y'all want a resolution to this, but regardless of what they will determine, it will be a health department-approved sanitation facility because they won't allow something that's not approved. So, I, I would, I would, I would suggest that the board goes ahead and adopts the, the regulation as it is so that we will have a tent camping ordinance. So, we don't have another pop-up commercial site because we do not have a tent camping ordinance. Is there any questions? I'll, I'll do my best to answer.
Board members having any questions?
You were worried about pop-up commercial, but this is, this only addresses without compensation.
Well, no, it, it does. On the, if you'd like me to read the tent camping ordinance, tent camping is permitted by owners, residents, tenants, and their respective guests on property owned least or otherwise legally occupied by the owners, residents, or tenants, without compensation for a period no more than seven consecutive days, and shall require a health department-approved sanitation. And the, the suggested language, language to change undeveloped land to property without a dwelling unit, a recreational vehicle connected to a permit, permitted septic system on lots less than one acre. And then B, a conditional use permit, if allowed per zoning district, see table of uses in appendix A, is required for any exception to these provisions. So, before we, the top talked about without compensation. So, if it's with compensation, it's an exception to the above-
B under B, okay.
Above thing, so it's a, a different section. And then the last item is no full-time occupancy is allowed.
So, who's gonna be enforcing this? Zoning administrator. Okay. Because I don't want this back before the board again in six months trying to define what a, what is a Virginia Department of Health-approved sanitary- That's up to the health department. Yeah, that's up to the health department, right. Well, dude, well, this is a little bit off, that's related. What about full-time residency in camper, recreational vehicles in a commercial campground? Is that permitted?
That would be a Mr. Marston question.
Okay.
I, I mean, I, I know that in the travel trailer ordinance, both the tent camping ordinance and the travel trail, well, now, I'm sorry, recreational vehicle ordinance, the last item is no time, no full-time occupancy is allowed, and in tent camping, no full-time occupancy is allowed.
All right, then, I know of at least one campground where people are living at full-time.
I would not doubt that.
I know. We've dealt with a few.
I'm not sure people aren't living in sheds, but anyway, that's-
I know they're living full-time because I've responded to them on rescue squad. Little river campground. Back to what you brought up in this, seven days versus nine days, people coming in on a Friday and leaving on a Sunday. I would, I'd rather see like nine, maybe ten to be safe. Because I'd, I'd hate to see somebody coming down for the, the week and want to bracket their weekend.
Well, that would require, correct, Mr. Cadillac, a re-advertising?
No, it's, it's making it less restrictive.
It's less restrictive, okay.
Just an amendment by doing that.
Right, okay. Yeah, I, I was thinking it's a higher number.
Yeah, you're, you're right, but it's less restrictive.
Right, it's less restrictive, right, sorry about that.
I understand exactly what Mr. McKenzie is concerned about not having one. So, I would move that we adopt what was presented by the planning commission, with the exception for a period of no more than ten days. That would allow like a three-day weekend, the week, and then that. And again, this is without compensation.
Then we're done, we're done with it.
Well, I'm not gonna say we're done with it, but it's, we need to get something moving forward. I think you could still look at the less than an acre because you have some lands like some subdivision, Sweeten Beach, Chesapeake Beach, or Bakewell Shores, Sherwood Forest, you're gonna be less than an acre. So, but that's, we need to get something and move forward and then possibly-
Well, if you'd like to change the acreage, if it's-
I think that needs, we'd look at by the planning commission.
Okay.
And I included my motion that the planning commission review any lot size, whatever. Because you could have a lot that is pre-existed any zoning. The Sherwood Forest and Bakewell Shores, Fleeton Beach, Chesapeake Beach existed before zoning was ever approved. And I hate to see those people denied the possibility. You've still got to deal with their neighbors.
All right, gentlemen, we got a motion, a second on the floor, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
McKenzie, you have anything else?
I, I'm just trying to understand what Mr. Tomlin's motion for the memo. Are, are you saying that there, that there's, you want it larger than one acre or less than one acre?
Possibly less. I'm not saying which, but look at especially in the existing lots that were developed even before the zoning ordinance existed in seventy-four.
Okay.
Just looking at a fairness issue.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else, board members? McKenzie, you okay now?
I'm fine.
All right, just want to make sure. All right, ladies and gentlemen, our next item on our agenda is, is to convene into a closed meeting.
Need a motion from the board of supervisors that the Northam County Board of Supervisors convene in a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, section two point two, thirty-seven, eleven, eight, twenty-nine, discussion of the award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offers and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract, where discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Invited to attend closed meeting as necessary are the county administrator, assistant county administrator. Because they are deemed necessary in their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia Free, section two point two, thirty-seven, twelve, F.
So moved.
All right, got a motion, a second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen-
Ladies and gentlemen, we will be convening in the closed meeting. Thank y'all for coming right now. I need a motion to come out of closed meeting.
So moved.
You want, you want the motion.
Yeah, I need to, need the verbiage in there.
Motion that the Northumberland Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by roll call vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
So moved, that what he said.
All right, motion and a second. All right, any other discussion, if not, all those in favor. Mr. Brand?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Tomlin?
Aye.
Any aye? Do you have an action on anything else? Anything else you?
The only thing that I, I did put out for the board, I dropped it in, uh, board docs, well, I didn't, Morgan did, this afternoon, is the updated calendar. And, um, I know the board had discussed about the possibility of having a public hearing separate from the county budget, uh, public hearing. Time is starting to get shorter on us, and I didn't know if the board, I have to advertise that one week. I can advertise that tomorrow, and that this is just the school board budget. And advertise that next week and have the public hearing on May fourth to get that rolling. And then, um, the following week would be our regular board meeting, but we could have a work session earlier in the week if we wanted to. I, I just wanna start trying to have some.
Let's go with.
Some meetings, if that's all we.
I can't do it the ninth as one of your dates.
Okay.
That's the only one I, that's our squad meeting night.
What night, though?
The ninth. If you saw on his proposed schedule, the ninth was one of them.
Yeah, and, and I was just throwing out dates.
What day would be good for you besides that, Tom?
Either other day.
Any other date?
That week.
Okay. I am, uh.
Let's look at yours, because I cut mine off. But that's also a class.
Wait a minute, no, I'm getting ready to get out of class. Help yourself.
Actually, me, too.
You help yourself, whichever, whatever you have to.
She's getting you a copy of the schedule, Mr. Long.
You wanna be. My last day of class, if I'm not mistaken, is the second of May.
We can share. Okay, I, I'm good.
And I'm off, too. I think the twenty-ninth.
Nora, this is Jerusalem, but those are, this was today. This is tomorrow, the P C, and then the rest is the.
Yeah, that's, that's the, as I look, that's the only day.
You can't do the ninth, so what's one of that eight, three, ten?
That's on Tuesday, so.
Whatever, we got Monday.
I can do Monday or Wednesday. What's that, Tom?
Uh, May the ninth is when I got a conflict. I can do the Monday or the Wednesday.
How about, uh, how about the Monday?
I can do it.
I have a problem Monday, Lucky, you wanna change the ninth to, to the, uh.
Eight.
Eight?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Assuming.
That'd be fine, if you wanna do that.
Ronnie, that is.
I can work that, I can work that out. May the eighth.
All right, so everything else, every, all the other dates are okay?
Yep, that's the only one I had a problem with.
And, and we can go through this, and if we need to move something up, if we get to the opportunity, advertise the county budget sooner if we can.
Go ahead and advertise it.
Otherwise, um.
You wanna go ahead and advertise it, Tom?
I'd say go ahead and advertise it, because that just starts the process.
The, the county budget?
No, it's county. You mean the school budget?
The school budget.
School budget, yeah, right there.
Okay, we're going five-thirty on that.
You, you need that in the motion, or just, what, or what do you need?
Um, no, I, I can go ahead and just advertise that. As long as everybody's in agreement to that, we can do that. And I'll get that out tomorrow, so we do that on May fourth.
All right, well, all right, if all these dates are fine, we'll just, we'll just, just go if that's up for the ninth to change that to the eighth.
Five-thirty also, right.
Yeah, same time?
Same date.
Yeah, same times, all right.
Yep.
You, you wanna do the public hearing at five-thirty?
No, we can do that at seven.
Do that at seven.
Do that at seven, okay. That's what we normally do, that's why we want clarifications.
What, that's on eight? May the fourth. Oh, may the fourth, okay. May the fourth be with you.
Anything else, Lucky?
That's all I have.
All right, do we need to stay open?
Yeah.
All right.
Actually, I'm not sure, I have not heard back from the lady on May second.
Susan, uh. Stewart, Sue it. Not Stewart, Sue it.
And if we gotta meet earlier during the day, let's, let's do that, because I think that's a good resource.
That works better for her, early in the week.
I mean, no, I don't care.
Yeah, I, I think I was waiting to hear back from all the board members, and I heard back from everyone except Mr. Long. Is that date and time good for you, Mr. Long?
What, what day was that on?
Uh, May second, was that that Tuesday?
May second, yeah, that's good.
Calendar looks good.
At, at one P M, I think, is what we were talking about.
One P M.
Yeah, one P M.
So we'll, we'll reach back out to, um, to her and see if we can get that coming.
All right, one other thing you need to do, you need to make sure that Stewart is here, Philip is here. And as many planning commission members as you can get to.
Okay.
I actually request that they all come. And I'll, but don't forget it, I'll say something to them tomorrow night. Or you might wanna shoot them, shoot, shoot an email out to Stewart, if you don't mind.
No, I'll get with Philip and, uh, Stewart.
Because they, they both need to be here. Andrew, not leaving you out either.
I, I assume my presence was requested. No, it's not requested, it's required.
He can write the minutes, I, I'll stay at Bill's.
He can write the minutes and you, and you can take off?
And I'll stay in office, I'll cover the office.
No, I think, uh, Morgan needs to be here, too.
And the twins in the corner?
Yeah.
Yeah, twins in the corner behind you.
Yeah. Yeah, we gotta look good for her, too.
Sorry.
That's all right, she's.
Sounds good.
She gonna bring, bring in popcorn and drinks and peanuts.
Well, she's this lady from what, Southampton?
She, she's a board member, that's why she couldn't come.
Yeah.
Board member, what is it?
Sussex, Southampton, they wear clothes.
Affomatics, is it, is it Affomatics, she's a board member?
I think it's.
Sussex, Sussex, yeah.
That's down toward peanut territory.
Yeah.
I don't know where Southampton is.
Yeah.
She can bring some peanuts, make that a request.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of respect that from you, Morgan.
Yeah, I know.
You know, we could put that in form of a motion.
I'm not writing that.
Huh? That Morgan has to, uh, popcorn peanuts.
Hope we get the Cracker Jacks.
Yeah. That's like she can whip all that up.
That's, that's my money right there, y'all. He's got the money.
I thought Jimmy said your daddy was buying pizza.
All right, if nothing else, I'll, I'll take a motion, carry over.
I make a motion that we continue, stay open, continue to March, excuse me, May the second, at one P M.
I'll second it.
Yep. I wanna go back in time.
Motion to second to carry over till May the, uh, second. All those in favor say aye. Thank y'all for coming.
And if that's not, uh, doable, we'll try to get another date with her, and, uh, May fourth would be the next meeting date.
Yeah, anything like that, we, we can work it in.
All right, sounds good, thank y'all.